And what's this IH stuff?
I wish I knew.
Hey, the press is here. Be careful.
All right, so I wanted to provide everybody an opportunity to kind of get a review of what our inclusionary housing policies are. We have a number of new folks on council as well as planning commission and go over some of our successes, what the actual current language and rules are around inclusionary housing, what it is, and then offer up some discussion areas where we may be able to improve or adjust those current policies. So kind of backing up just for a second, you know, inclusionary housing was instituted initially in 2018 and with the intent of really targeting lower income members of our local workforce primarily, and then was updated again in 2022. There's been a few other tweaks here and there to account for a larger breadth of individuals within our community, members of the local workforce, who are unable to afford units either rental or for sale at market prices, since we've seen so many changes in the price of units over the last several years. Next slide, or I can take the clicker if you got it somewhere around. I don't see...
Is it this one? Should I try it?
So, our housing policies in a nutshell, they apply to most every land use application that we have out there, not all, but most, including annexations, planned developments, condo plats, duplex conversions, minor and major subdivisions, and multifamily residential units of five or more, or more than five, rather. What the policy says is that one out of the six units or lots that you are developing must be restricted as affordable. Now, there are some alternatives to that available to the developer, including potentially dedicating land, providing larger portions of affordable housing in other locations, paying a fee in lieu for small projects, those are that are six or less than six, rather, units or lots, and a fee in lieu for fractional requirements, and then the ability to provide inclusionary housing units at lower price points for additional credit towards that one out of six. Let me see if this will work or not. Other way, and it should. There we go. It gets further split down into rules around for sale units versus rental units. I'll start with the for sale units. Currently, we target affordable units for for sale units between 100% AMI and 160% AMI, and I'm going to get to that here in just a bit. You all have handouts in front of you that break it down into greater detail what that means for individual households. But the rules say that of those for sale units that are provided, the inclusionary housing units, can be no more than an average of 140% AMI, that there shall be parity across each of those AMI levels between, at least between 120 and 160, that studios have to be 120% AMI or less, and one bedrooms must be 140% AMI or less, even though the targets go all the way up to 160, and that units provided at 100% AMI or less actually count for one and a half credits. So that would really come into play in developments of 12 or more, for instance, where that would count as three units, for instance, or if it was 18 total units, you could provide three of those technically and satisfy it, or two of those, rather, and satisfy it, excuse me. Rental units, we currently target between 60% and 100% AMI, so definitely lower on the spectrum of household incomes. The rules state that no more than half of the IH units, rental units, can be more than 80% AMI. Studios all have to be at 80% AMI or less. 60% AMI units can count, can get extra credit at a one and a half ratio, and ADUs may not satisfy those inclusionary housing requirements. I can make a noise, but I can't move. So this is, this is the sheet that we all have, should all have in front of you or with a neighbor, that really kind of gets down to the nuts and bolts of affordability and income thresholds. These numbers come from CHAFA via Internal Revenue Service, and I'm thinking of...
HUD.
HUD, thank you. I was like, what's that other federal agency? So, and they are updated every year, generally in April or May. So we're actually expecting some changes here in the next month or so. That top table that you see shows what the income thresholds are for each AMI level. So you often hear people say, oh yeah, the AMI for Chaffee County is $60,900. That's for one person, right? That's, and that's the max for one person. If you're anything more than one person, that number's going to be different. You know, for a two-person household, it jumps up to $69,600, for instance, and all the way up to $114,900 for an eight-person household. The colors represent our target ranges for the rental units and the for sale units. So everything in the yellow, 60 to 100%, is sort of our target area. Everything in the blue, target area for rental units, excuse me, everything in the blue is our target area for for sale units between 100 and 160% AMI. The reason for this is that the market, over the last few years at least, on rental units, has been at about 100% AMI and above, okay? And I should note that the rental requirements include utilities, but a lot of those market rate units don't include all utilities in all instances. On the for sale side of things, the market rate has been, it's actually come down a little bit now, on the average. It's closer to 180%, maybe even a tiny bit lower than that right now, on the average. Couple of years ago, it was at 200% and easily above, on the average. There's virtually nothing available, though. There's a few right now available under 180%, but not, not a ton. So this is, this explains why we've targeted this, right? Because there wasn't anything else. Doesn't matter how much you made, if you were making 160% AMI, if there wasn't anything available that you could buy, then you're out of luck, right? Almost said something else. So then the next table down shows what this translates to as far as the maximum prices for rents at various bedroom sizes at various AMIs. So it tracks, everything in the yellow is what, again, we're targeting within our inclusionary housing policies. It ranges from $914 for a studio at 60% AMI all the way up to a four-bedroom at 100% AMI costing $2,525. Again, these include all utilities, all right? So that's an important thing to know. On the for side, for sale side of things, we're looking at the range between a studio at 100% AMI, which would cost $233,326, all the way up to a four-bedroom house at 160% AMI costing $676,599, which was still below the median sales price for a market rate single-family house, and still is today, actually. It was much, much higher about a year ago. Let me see if it'll change for me now.
Bill, while you're on that screen, though, it says on the rentals that it includes utilities, but my understanding of the definition of affordable housing is 30% all expenses for the house. So why doesn't the mortgage make an allowance for the utilities?
So the mortgage, okay, you're asking about the mortgage. You're comparing the rental versus the mortgage side of things. Okay, so the rentals do include the utilities, and there's, those numbers come from what's provided by HUD as far as utility allowances and everything else. On the for sale side of things, we include taxes, insurance, HOA fees, et cetera, but these numbers are based off of a relatively complicated formula that that brings you to this. And to help keep it apples and apples, you're never talking about mortgages in the market rate that where the utilities are paid for, right? So why would you talk about it when you're, when it comes down to the affordable units? And there's no direction from HUD or CHAFA specific to inclusion of utilities in the for sale amounts. They provide, these are the only, the top two are the only things that CHAFA provides are the actual incomes and the rental prices, max rental prices. They leave it open as far as how for sale prices are considered, and we utilize a formula that's pretty common statewide as far as how people get to that.
So what I'm hearing is, due to the lack of ability to get data, the definition of 30% is meaningless, because if I can't get data on what the utilities are going to be for a mortgage, I'm not going to think about it.
And utilities are going to vary according to the house, according to the utility provider, according to where you are. There's a lot of different things. And obviously, the other thing we have to take into account when we're talking about inclusionary housing is the developers' ability to actually get these developments built, because these are private market developments that we're talking about here. These are not necessarily just, you know, the city subsidizing housing. This is coming from the private market.
Thank you.
And someone just reflective listened. I'm pretty impressed.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Do you feel heard, Bill?
I'd like to take a moment and just appreciate. Okay.
I have a question for the slide two.
Okay.
I've always been confused on why we include children on the household sizes rather than just earners. How can you speak to that?
I don't know the specifics. Again, this is something that comes down from HUD and CHAFA. I mean, they, there tends to be an association between the number of people in the household and the anticipated size of the home. So I think that's probably why they try to line it up in that way, so that when a price is established for a particular unit, rental unit, for instance, there's a, there's a general number of, that's used of one and a half people per bedroom, and that helps you kind of align the affordability rates with the, with the incomes. But, you know, to your point, you're right. Not everybody in the household is going to be making an income, but they make that differentiation, I think, just to help out with the size of the units that they potentially would go into.
Well, that makes sense for the bottom two, who have one to four bedrooms. But when we're using the data, I would think that maybe we would stop at like a two or a four person, you know, and not use the bottom half of that, of that chart there. You know, I mean, just the way it's, because if you have a lot, that's like a child penalty there.
Yeah, if you, it could, well...
My comment.
You actually get, you're, get a higher allowance, though, of what you can make when you have more kids. So you would stay at the same AMI, but if you have, you're allowed more children technically. Yeah. It's, it is pretty complicated, but it actually, it sort of, it sort of works to the family's advantage in that case.
Except when they're buying groceries.
Just to clarify, I think, a little bit more of Alyssa's questions.
Yeah.
You know, in mortgage lending, and Alyssa, you probably, Alyssa, you probably already know this, but you know, that it's the debt-to-income ratio that mortgage companies look at. And back in the day, it was 30%. Now they're proving mortgages much higher debt-to-income ratios, but I think that's where HUD's getting is 30%, because it was pretty much established that that was a reasonable debt-to-income ratio. And on a rental, you don't have the debt-to-income ratio you use renting. So I think that might, that might answer that question.
Francie, I think you need to turn your microphone on.
I didn't know there was a...
Okay, thanks.
Am I on now?
Could you say it again?
The light's green.
It must be on. Anyways, your, your point being that it...
I can speak louder.
Just say that again.
It's the debt-to-income ratio that I think drives the 30% on the for sale.
Right, as far as what's considered affordable. Okay. Anybody have any other questions about this chart? Just, just know, the top table is not something that we have any control over whatsoever. That, that comes from the feds and the state, well, and the top two tables for that matter. The, the third one is where there is some, a little bit of flexibility, but we've been utilizing a calculation that's used fairly commonly across the state to derive sales prices. Again, these will be changing in the next month or so, and that's one of the reasons we actually have held off on bringing you a new fee in lieu, is because we want to get these new numbers to factor into that fee in lieu, because the fee in lieu is based off of what the market is doing and what the affordable, the affordable rates are and that, that delta there. So I'm going to move on here, or maybe Christie's going to move on for me. So this, that chart has been kind of put into this example, so you all can kind of take a look at how this, what this ends up looking like on the ground. You really need to think about things in more ways than just a single individual when we're talking about AMIs, because there's multiple household sizes out there. I believe the average household size in, in SLIDA is around like 2.3 or so, but obviously, we have household sizes that are much bigger than that. I've circled and read the specific prices that are applicable under our inclusionary housing policy. The ones that are not circled are not covered by those target ranges. So just as an example, one person making 80% AMI, which is $48,000 plus, the max rent that they could pay for a studio would be a little over $1,200, and for a one-bedroom, a little over $1,300, what would be considered affordable and including utilities. But the maximum sales price for a, for sale home is $177,000 for a studio and $193 for a one-bedroom. These are numbers you don't see around here at all.
Right.
Because, and the reason for that is because to build a studio or one-bedroom is going to cost probably $300,000 at minimum. And, you know, so on and so forth. You're just trying to capture, and you can see what the household AMI comes out to with the computation of what, you know, all the earners in the household are making, and then what the maximum amounts would be. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I just need you to talk me through it. It's hard for me to understand. So if our 80%, if the person in yellow, the 80% AMI, making $48,720, if they had two kids at zero, would their maximum rent be higher or lower?
Well, then you, that's when you need to go back to the other sheet. I don't actually have, can I grab that real quick? So if that one person suddenly had two kids, out of nowhere, it would be...
Twins, it was twins.
Immaculate twins coming out.
62, 640.
Suddenly, three person making $48,000, then they would be just over 60%, okay? So somewhere in like the 62 percentile, right? So they would qualify for anything above 60% that was, that was offered out there. And then you would have to track that down to, you know, what, what is at 80%, for instance, for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom? That would be the maximum price that they could be charged is like $1,300 for a one-bedroom, $1,566 for a two-bedroom. That's a challenging scenario, because, you know, by having those two children, you suddenly go from, trying to think, why, why is this slightly different numbers? Oh, yeah, you, you go suddenly from being in the, up at 80% AMI down to just over 60% if you have those two kids. But you would qualify for those things that are at a lower AMI. All right.
And Bill, just a reminder that these are all, these are all the 80 and the 60 and the 100 is up too.
That is the maximum.
It's the maximum.
It's the maximum both for income and the maximum sales and rental prices.
How is income defined?
How's what?
Income defined?
Does it matter growth?
It's got to be growth.
We have it, don't we have it in deed restriction? Yeah. The housing authority who administers our inclusionary housing program and the qualifications and thresholds, they have, you know, guidelines that they follow there. But generally speaking, it is the adjusted gross income that comes in on your tax return.
Okay, so, so the fact that we have a lot of rich retired people in this county drives that AMI way up and does no, and, and makes the situation even worse.
Yeah, and I was going to get to that very point, and I have to admit, I don't know all the ins and outs of what goes into HUD and CHAFA's numbers for the AMI. You know, does it have to be a certain type of income? Could it be dividends, all that stuff? I don't know, honestly. But to that same point, we also have a fair, a fairly large percentage, at least a significant percentage, of people who are remote workers, right, who are pulling in incomes from much bigger cities, but it counts here, right? So that is absolutely factored in there and does drive our AMI up.
Well, if it's AGI, then, then any income, capital gains, interest.
It would be all of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, there, there are some nuances, I think, that HUD and CHAFA uses, but I don't know enough, honestly. All I know is these are the numbers that we're required to use. So, Michelle, does that kind of clarify things? I mean, if, if, if that one person suddenly had two kids, but they also got a, got a pay raise up to the third one down there, and they're making $78,300, well, suddenly, their household AMI is at 100, and that bumps up what the maximum rent they could pay affordably is, or what they could buy a home for. So, oops. Hey, all right. Okay. At this point, I'm going to, we got that background context. I'm going to pass things over to Catherine, and she's going to talk a little bit about where we are, what we've accomplished through inclusionary housing over the last several years, and especially in relationship to the Chaffee Housing, Chaffee County Housing Needs Assessment, which was done in 2022. And we'll, we'll get into some details to kind of show you what we've, how close we've gotten to where we want to go at this point. Catherine?
Okay, so this chart is very busy, because we've been very busy, and because it's very busy out there. So, but what this chart is showing is basically pretty much all active developments in town, and the remaining units or lots that are in those developments. This count is based on, you know, oftentimes, when developments go through the process, it might be one lot, but they stipulate through their PD or through some other, their SIA something, whether it's a duplex or triplex lot. So we've added up all those, all those units on those lots that have not yet been issued a CO. So some of these are under construction, but when you look through all of these active developments, and there are a couple on here, there are some on here that are approved but haven't started building yet, but many of these are currently, you know, pulling permits or close to that in the process. You get to 1,200 units out there.
These are unsold.
These are either, some of these are under construction, and they just haven't gotten their CO. Some of them are vacant lots, just waiting for a permit to be pulled. Some of it is vacant ground that has been, let's see, so probably, you know, like 505 oak, nothing's, they still have their public improvements to do, but they have their platted lots and their entitlements. First and D is probably the only one on here that's not fully entitled as of yet, but we are confident that will happen. So.
Don't chink us.
Not overly.
400 in the South Ark, that would be...
So that's the entitled.
Oh, it's totally...
That's, yep, so that's what just kind of went through at the end of last year, and the 400...
It doesn't mean that they were going to get anything solid. It's just that we, okay.
Yeah, yep, that was the number that the, the PD amendment approved was 400. So those are probably the least furthest along the way, because there will be forthcoming subdivisions for those to come to fruition. But as you can see, there's, there's several on here. They're already built, or several of these subdivisions are, you know, regularly pulling permits, and there's lots under construction on them. But 1,200 of these entitled units do not yet exist as far as a certificate of occupancy goes. And so then, we, when we break that down further into of these developments, what are deed restricted rentals and deed restricted for sale units? So you look down at the, what's circled in yellow there, if you can read that. And I do think you have this in your packet, too, if that's easier to read. Or the, the handout, I mean, not the, the physical packet. Or was it not?
It wasn't.
Okay. Anyhow, okay. So, of the, of the deed restricted rentals, so in these columns, I have included what currently exists and is occupied. So you'll see that it shows 218 inclusionary housing rentals. 56 of those are built and are occupied. So that leaves just over 160 inclusionary housing rentals that are entitled out there, waiting to be built. On the for sale side, the chart shows 183 units that are totally entitled and built. Of that, 19 of those are built and occupied. So that leaves just over 160 that are out there waiting to be built, but that have their entitlements. So when you look at those numbers of what, of the remaining inclusionary housing units compared to the 1,200, so you've got just over 360 that are all entitled. That represents 27% of that 1,200 number. So over a quarter of that 1,200 will be income restricted housing. So then...
Excuse, it seems like there's apples and oranges here. You like go magpie and blue jay. Remaining units is zero, and yet you've got eight rentals. So the population... So the population of those two sets of numbers is different.
So, yes, so the, the remaining units is everything, all of the units, and that's how you get to twelve hundred. So deed restricted, not deed restricted. So that's why, like, for, for example, those eight, those four magpie, four blue jay, so when you look at the IH total of two eighteen, that's what I subtracted out when I just mentioned, it comes down to a hundred and sixty-two when you subtract out those eight, plus the forty-eight from Confluent Park. So then that gets us what's not written on this document, but that I was just explaining is the IH rental total minus what's built, fifty-six that's built, comes to a hundred and sixty-two.
I think, I think what may be confusing is that the four, for example, at Blue J, those are four of nineteen that are deed restricted, correct? I think that project was nineteen units.
Yep, yep.
Four of them are deed restricted, the others are market rate. So there's no more to be built, so that's why it's zero.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So that's why it's zeroed out in the remaining units.
Right. I don't think this is, is this on yet?
No.
It doesn't sound like it.
I'll speak louder.
But if we take...
Is mine working?
We may be older, so it does sound like...
So in the red circle, that is built and unbuilt?
No, the red circle is only unbuilt.
Only unbuilt.
The red circle's unbuilt. In the yellow, that's built and unbuilt.
Okay.
So that's all, just so you can get a sense of all, of all the Inclusionary Housing units out there, right? So it comes out to about four hundred.
That's what she means by remaining.
But then when we take out what's built, that's when we get down to more like three hundred and twenty, it's three hundred and twenty-six of those four hundred.
Right.
And let me make one other clarification. So when she says that the twelve hundred is, includes built and unbuilt, these are all projects that have Inclusionary Housing units as a part of them, right? So we're not talking, we're talking about the twelve hundred, obviously, we're not talking about the thirty-six hundred or so units that existed before Inclusionary Housing went in. So is there anything actually in the left-hand column, remaining units, that's actually built at this point?
No, nothing that's CO'd.
Nothing is CO'd.
No, some of it is under construction.
From this point forward, there are twelve hundred or so units that are entitled or approved via the plating process to be built.
But not necessarily deed restricted.
Correct. That's what she said.
No.
There's about twenty-seven percent of those which will be deed restricted.
Yeah. So the twelve hundred is all deed restricted and not remaining. No COs, so.
So like in the, underneath, like with the one that's two eighteen, like fifty-six of those, how many of those have been built?
Fifty-six of those have been built.
Okay, so fifty-six are in red circle.
Yes.
And then, okay.
Or not in the red circle, the red circle is only, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, organizing it in my head.
And then on the for sale units, she said, how many were built?
Nineteen. And I'll be going into that in more detail in the next slide, the actual built, so.
So maybe we'll let you move, move forward.
Yeah, so.
It'll explain it all in the next slide.
Oops. Here we go. So, is this the, yeah, that's the right one, mine are out of order. So this is strictly rental units, and what this slide gets into is both the status of the projects, plus how it relates to the 2022 Housing Needs Assessment. So last year around this time, I gave you a presentation on the status of Inclusionary Housing units, but when I went to do it again this year, it was like, it's, I felt it lacked context. Like, here's what, what we have, but I didn't mention, like, where we were trying to get to. So I wanted to incorporate that this year. So using the Housing Needs Assessment and broken down by AMI, you can see how this further divides them by built, under construction, approved, and then somewhere under review, potential, maybe, will happen. So in the thirty to sixty percent AMI range, there's, it's a range in rentals that goes lower than our Inclusionary Housing does. It is the range that you really only hit with very subsidized projects. And so that's why you've got some potential for some Janes Place units, when those come onboard to hit that range, and then Lytec projects would fall into that. The Confluent Park Lytec project is not shown here, the one that's occupied, because that was already accounted for in the Housing Needs Assessment. They already assumed that was built, and they built the needs from there forward. So you can see the overall remaining amount, well, the total amount of needs based on the, in this range, from the whole sixty to a hundred, and, and really down to the thirty to a hundred, based on the Housing Needs Assessment, is a hundred and seventy-five units. The, you can see in that thirty to sixty percent range, under review, we show a potential senior Lytec project. To say that project is in its infancy is probably an overstatement. So it is, but it's really the only thing we have going that's has some potential to meet that need, and then there's still those remaining forty-two units not meeting that need, because that is such an extreme need, and it's difficult to meet. Then the next one, if you look at the sixty to a hundred, this one shows the magpie built, because that was built after the needs assessment, the blue jay was before, so it's not in here. And then once again, a few units at Janes Place, 505 potential when that happens, Flower Mill when that happens, and then the potential for First and D apartments in there. But one of the things about those approved, say, the Flower Mill, the 505, those are out of the city's control, right? We've, we've put, we've approved the projects, and now it's up for the private developer and their financing to come through with those units. The next thing on this one, if you look at those gray units, they're, in the remaining thirty-six, there's that gray area, and that is because a hundred percent AMI units do start to reach the market rate. So things like the units above the VIC that are a little more a non-traditional kind of style, what HR RMC is building, those aren't deed restricted, but those are going to be targeted to their workforce, and then you have the Confluent Apartments and the Angel View Apartments, that any of those may have some units that meet this need without having the deed restriction on them, that's just the market rate for them. And then you can see beyond that, you know, somewhere in the, the teens or maybe twenty units remaining in that range. So then the same thing on the for sale side. When we look at the eighty percent AMI on this for sale side, we've got both built, several under construction, and then, and then some approved, that all pretty much, where the Housing Needs Assessment meets that particular goal, it's just a unit shy. Those are, those are all CHT projects, right? They're, they're the ones that are able to reach down to that eighty percent AMI level because of their land trust model. And I would also say, you know, this example does show, the Housing Needs Assessment is, is a big general instrument, it's not a fine-tooth assessment. So there's saying that there's only one, need for one more unit in that range. I, you know, I don't think any of us would think that that is the what's needed between now and 2027, so, but, but I just wanted to keep it consistent and show that. So then when you get to the hundred and hundred and twenty, the same thing, this is where we start getting the, that one in six units, where we're having people, okay, do one at one forty, one at one sixty, you know, or, or have the lower one at one twenty. So those are kind of what you see across there with what's built, what's under construction. Salida Crossings, should they, their building permit is in process and could go to the county as early as this week, so there is progress being made there. And then once again, you have the 505 Flower Mill, and then the remaining units. Shows thirteen units in that range, which, once again, maybe might be more need in that area, but, but using what we have in the, in the needs assessment. And then lastly, the one forty to one sixty, all those same developments that had the hundred sixty unit. I have included in here, under the built, just for context, to show that when I put this together and just did a, a dive into Zillow, there were nine current market rate listings between the one hundred and sixty, or one hundred and thirty, as low as one thirty to one sixty AMI. So there are some market rate units that, that will fall into this category. And then that's also why I've shown the gray area there, that some of these coming online, the Flower Mill, we know, has the desire to reach down into lower AMIs beyond just their deed restriction requirements, and just other, when these units come on, Salida Crossings, it's gonna be ninety-five units at one time. So there could very, and a lot of them are, you know, studio and one-bedroom condos, they, they could fall into that hundred and sixty percent range. So the gray area is like a, not deed restricted, but there's some potential there to meet the need. So I guess the, the summation of that is, from what we're able to do, there's definitely progress. You can see there's a lot of progress in areas, and just really hoping to turn some of that, move these along, getting the under construction into the built, and getting the approved to under construction, but the, those are things that are out of our control right now.
Yeah, I, and I'll reiterate kind of what Catherine's speaking to, is plenty that's been approved, right? Getting them actually built comes down to a variety of factors, and not the least of which is the financing on the part of the developers, availability of labor, interest rates, there's a, a lot of factors. And we would love to have seen greater progress on these, but so much of that is outside of the city's control. Okay, so before we move on to potential discussion points and, and areas of possible improvement, any questions on, on that piece?
Sorry, I do have a question. So I was looking at this, this chart.
Yep.
So there are some of these, like the Angel View ones, HR MC, where it's zeros all the way across, that they aren't providing any Inclusionary Housing, so I'm wondering why we have that.
Angel View's a, a unique one, that, the apartments were done through, well, the whole Angel View area, which incorporates the PD area and the apartments, they got a bit of a waiver, if you will, several years ago, when they provided the Confluent Park Lytec project, because the, the AMIs of that particular project were so low, and it counted as so many credits, they asked as part of the PD, part of the negotiation, that those credits be attributed to Angel View, so that they wouldn't actually have to go ahead and build any units out there. So that's why that one is listed without any Inclusionary Housing units in it. As of right now, none are required. All right. So discussion points, and, you know, things that we want to ask you all, and try to get a little bit more direction, if, if we want to go ahead and make any changes, and specifically thinking about the, the Land Use Code update, which is forthcoming, but potentially even advance of that. I put it in the terms of, of some staff suggestions and recommendations. I've also passed out to you all a memo that came from the Chaffey Housing Authority with some recommendations of their own. I just got that this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to look at it really closely. But more or less, it, it falls in line with what staff suggestions are. I'll point out maybe the areas of some potential discrepancy. On the rental side of things, outside of the fact that we haven't seen as many built as we would like, we still feel that the target AMI ranges, the, the price ranges are still right. It, it's that sweet spot that's under the market or right below the market, and, and a reminder that it includes utilities. So when anybody does that comparison of what's being rented out there to what would be required through deed restriction, you have to factor in the, the fact that utilities are being paid for in the deed restricted units. Currently, the market is somewhere around ninety percent, all the way up to two hundred percent, if you go ahead and look out there as far as what's being rented. So we're not recommending any, any changes to that, but we may be recommending a, a potential increase of the credit that would come along with rental units at sixty percent AMI and below. So currently, you get one and a half credits. It used to be two, we went down to one and a half, but there may be an argument for increasing that amount of credit to encourage more of those rental units at the lower ends, you know, sixty percent is the only, the only AMI range within the overall range that's still under a thousand dollars for, for any unit. But at the same time, we could cap the number of sixty percent AMIs that can get, that get included into a project, so that you're still creating some parity and still making some units available at eighty percent AMI or at a hundred percent AMI. You could cap that potentially at two for one. Yeah, go ahead, and I'd kind of like to deal with these one at a time, so if you have questions about it, or you have thoughts, please.
Well, when we're talking about the rentals, we're still talking about thirty percent of the household income.
Correct.
And I don't, I mean, I don't know how flexible we can be on that thirty percent. To me, I'm thinking like, you know, the price of broccoli is the same, whether you're making fifty percent AMI and, or a hundred fifty percent AMI, and if you are in the rental market, maybe it makes more sense to devote twenty-five percent or twenty percent of your income to your rent, and that way you can save a little bit more, or however you want to do your finances. And I wonder if for rentals, moving that percentage away from thirty would be an option.
Well, it's not an option from the point of view of the numbers that are, are set by, by CHAFA and HUD. They, they set it at, at that amount. It's also not an option when it comes to grant funding, because the, the state and the feds, when they provide funding towards developments to private developers or to the public, they stipulate these numbers, right? So we can't really adjust it that way. What we have, the, the ability to control is where our target AMIs are. At the same time, and this applies to rental units or for sale units, we have to remember that when we adjust maximum sales or rental prices down as far as the deed restrictions, that means more out of the bank of the developers, right? So what we've attempted to do through our Inclusionary Housing policy is try to create, find a sweet spot where we can try to encourage developers... find a sweet spot where we can try to encourage developers or require developers to provide affordable units, but not encourage it so much or at such levels that they're unwilling to build it.
Right.
Because nobody's going to build it if they're not going to make a dollar on it, right?
So if we can't move the 30%, I, I was just skimming the Chaffee Housing Authority handout and I think there was the word like a buffer, something that they were.
Yes. So, so that is something that already is in the code that allows for, let's say you have a, a rental unit at 80% AMI.
I think it's only for sale.
Let's, let's double check. Actually, I've got it right here. I think it's both actually, but let's double check. So we approved, the city approved recently, within the last year, an income buffer that does allow.
10%, right?
10%.
10% increase. Yeah, and I guess that is for for sale. So the city shall allow a 10% buffer between the price cap and the income cap to provide flexibility for home buyers to qualify without being additionally cost burdened. So that, and that, I think that brings up another point because that's something that Housing Authority brought up is that maybe this should apply to rentals as well. Currently, we just do it for for sale. So if it's 100% house for sale, you could make an income, your household can make an income up to 110% AMI in order to qualify. That buffer right now is incredibly important because of the interest rates.
Right.
The interest rates have gone up to a point that's, it's made the mortgage that much higher.
And, you know, in a perfect world, it'd be great if we could go below 30, but I think it's also really important to recognize what percentage of people in this county are paying 50, 60% of their income going to it. So we just, we got to stay focused on this and if we can get this done, I mean, it's going to solve for a lot of issues for a lot of people.
So if we increase the buffer, then potentially they won't be paying 50% of their income. They'll be paying a smaller percentage of their income, right?
Yeah, but I think we, we focus on this for now and try to get this done and try to get as much housing out there to people, just.
To, to your point though, the, the Housing Authority does recommend increasing that buffer from 10% up to potentially, and I, I just got off the phone so I can speak for her, up potentially to 20% above whatever the, the price level is.
And did she say only for, for sale or did she say?
No, for both rentals. I think she wants it for both rentals and, and for sale.
Okay.
And then how did?
And I think she's also online, so if we need to clarify, we may be able to.
So there's one unit. It's a 100% unit. And you have two applicants. One is at 100%, one's at 120%. They both qualify. I think that's.
Currently, their guidelines stipulate is the first in the door. So the first application that they receive that, that qualifies has the opportunity to, to purchase. And then if they don't qualify, then they move to the next.
So, you know, Bill, when we originally were talking about the one and a half or the two, two times for the 60% AMIs.
Yep.
I mean, I, I'm not opposed to going to two, but we talked about how, you know, there's so many people that are in the 60 to 80% range that if it's 60%, can't qualify. So I'm not really sure I understand the benefits of adding to two. I mean, if, if it's 80% or less, you know, what's the benefit of, I guess the benefit is to the developer to say that they get those credits so they build less units and they build less units, but they're, but the units are 60%. So they may be knocking other people out of the market while they do it.
Yeah. So this, this suggestion comes in context of some of our other suggestions down the road here about reducing, for instance, the for sale max. If you're going to do that, it's going to throw off the balance of things because, you know, we, we may want to reduce the for, like the, the sales prices or the rent prices, but construction prices haven't gone down.
Right.
In fact, they've probably gone up since we last talked about it. So this plays into that as a potential give, you know, to, to strike that balance. To the point that Giff was just asking about the two, if they did shift it down to 60% AMI and we incorporated in a buffer.
Buffer, yeah.
You could make up to 80% AMI, you know, if it was at 20% for example.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of that. And I'd be in favor of it going to renters as well.
Going what?
To renters. Have that buffer apply to rentals.
I don't know, I guess I have a microphone now. I'd be in favor of going to 20% for the buffer and including rentals in that buffer.
And, yeah, and with that buffer, does that, I mean, I know we've kind of discussed the concept of while you're renting and you get a increase in your wage and should you be punished for that by being knocked out of that range and then having to find a new place because you got a raise?
So the Housing Authority guidelines and Ashley, if you could maybe weigh in, because I'm going off of memory here, they do their reviews annually on the incomes. I believe right now that means you would have a minimum of one year after getting that, that raise. If that raise happened to happen like, you know, right after the review, you potentially would have just under two years before you would need to identify another spot that you would qualify for. But the, the, the point is to not, to, to keep units affordable to those people making those levels on the rental side. On the for sale side, it doesn't matter. When you buy it.
Yeah.
And you have that income, that's what sticks. And even if you make more money after the fact, so be it.
Right.
Right? You still can only sell it at that AMI level. But that's how I understand how the Housing Authority will look at these. Now granted, we only have so many units that are currently being, you know, have been deed restricted and, and so that program is really pretty nascent at this point.
But to Justin's point, the, the 20% would help in that situation.
It could.
Yeah, if there's fluctuation within that.
Yeah.
Percentage range.
Not just for the application, but for down the road.
Yeah, that's a great point.
While being a tenant, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. That sounds great.
Okay. Any other things on this? I've got a couple more pages for sure. Okay. There you go. So some other discussion points, suggestions, given what we were talking about earlier with our AMIs probably being swayed quite a bit by retirees, remote workers, and the fact that units on the higher end of that AMI spectrum tend to be a little harder to sell because, I mean, think about it, a unit 160% AMI that's going to be deed restricted forever and you're not going to be able to make very much money on the resale. Let's say that unit's at $500,000, but there might be a market rate unit for $550,000. You might very well hold out or try to qualify for that market rate unit because it's unrestricted, right? So there's, there's a little bit of tension there and it, it, it tends to be fairly wise to create a little bit more of a buffer between what your market is and what the high end of your deed restricted units are.
So, so Bill, if I could say that when we originally went up to 160% AMI, I think this commission stated and made it that the 160 would only be for the largest, the larger units. And I think it ended up saying that it couldn't be a one bedroom or, or a studio. What if you kept the 160, but you said it had to be a three bedroom? Or a, or a two bedroom? Because the point was to encourage larger, a larger unit or a larger home rather than just doing the little studios and one bedrooms. So if you kept the 160, but you restricted it to two or three bedrooms or more, two plus, or a certain square footage or, you know, I don't know. I mean, you'd want the bedrooms. That would make more sense to me and I think that was what we discussed initially, but it came back down to studios and one bedrooms at the time. I don't know what everyone else thinks about that.
I would only like it if it was based on number of children. Because just getting a five bedroom house, no two people need that. They don't need it.
So one of the other guidelines that the Housing Authority uses is there's sort of a maximum proportionality to it. For instance, one person can only qualify for a studio or a one bedroom.
Yeah.
Two people can only qualify for one or two. What is, is it two to one?
It's bedrooms minus one equals.
Bedroom, yeah, bedrooms minus one equal the minimum number of people, is that right?
Yeah.
Minimum number of people. So, yeah, they use that formula to figure it out.
And, you know, I think a, a lot of this was happening at the state level going up to 160 and, you know, places like Denver, Colorado Springs, they don't have their numbers skewed by 27% of this county being 65 plus and retired. So, I mean, I could see the argument to go down from 160 because, because there just isn't a lot of market for that.
Yeah, I mean, if you go back to the, the page that shows the prices, a three bedroom at 160% is $600,000. So.
But that's well below market for a three bedroom home.
Three bedroom, probably single families, it's going to be about 750, 700 to 750.
For a three bedroom home.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I know two bedroom homes that are selling for, you know, up to a million dollars.
Sure. But Francie, you've got to remember that's also townhomes and the like.
No, not necessarily. I could, I can tell you one particular home that I know of that just sold just like this for a million dollars. It's a two bedroom home.
But this, in this formula, it could be a three bedroom condo.
Yeah.
So there's no, it's only.
And, and I just bought a place, a three bedroom, not too much above that. And there's no way if I was in that level, I would have bought it with a deed restriction and, and saved a little bit of money, but got killed on the back end, so.
Well, I just think, you know, when we had that discussion initially, we, we wanted to encourage a, a mix of housing, not just the little houses, because there are families that are still needing two and three bedroom homes and the family can qualify for sale or, you know, better than, than market.
Let's just call it three bedrooms plus instead of.
Three bedrooms plus, I'd be fine. I just think leaving that window open makes some sense to me. That's all I'm saying. You know, a, a builder doesn't have to build it, you know, I mean.
Doesn't the increase in the buffer kind of take, probably take care of that?
Well, maybe it does from 140 to 160, yeah.
Yeah, that, that could potentially.
But it still doesn't, it still doesn't address the number of bedrooms issue that I'm talking about because 140 for a condo, for a one bedroom condo, you know, or it, there's a big disparity there, you know? And, and I think a developer, you know, obviously it's in their interest to build the smallest unit to get the deed restrictions and we want to just open that door so that there can be somewhat larger, we're encouraging somewhat larger homes as well. That's just exactly like when the flower mill came before us, the district commission wanted four of the 16 to be larger. Because we don't want, and, and Salida crossings is going to be largely studios. So we've got a lot of that coming on and I just, I, I hate to see us not really be thoughtful about making sure that there is a parity between the studios, the one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and encouraging some three bedrooms, even if it's at a higher price, higher AMI.
You're correct that we have a lot of the smaller stuff slated to come on board from what we can tell. What's, it's interesting though, because you can often add to your footprint an additional building, or sorry, an additional bedroom for less than the, the, for less cost than the additional price that you could get for that deed restricted unit. So I'm sort of surprised we haven't seen more of that, but.
Right. And I'd like to see more. I don't know how we get there, but.
Yeah, okay. That's a good point for discussion. The, the next one that we're talking about, and this, this would be based off of that 140% AMI, but even if maybe your example, Francie, was involved in it, bringing the average down from 140% AMI to 130%, just kind of shifting everything.
I think we could do that even if we left 160.
Yep, yeah. Still remaining, you know, keeping the parity so that we're getting it across that whole spectrum of need that's been identified.
If you go to the 2X versus 1.5X, you're going to effectively lower that percentage AMI.
We could certainly see that. And a reminder, right now, the code only requires between 120 and 160. So we've been seeing a lot of that built out. We haven't, even though it allowed for 100% in the extra credit, we haven't seen any of that. I don't think we've seen any of it. Now, the, the flower mill did propose that, but that's, that's sort of a different deal really. It was already well above the, the required amount. So yes, it is possible that giving the additional credit could lead to, lean on the 100%. I would argue there's probably greater need at that level and especially if we're talking about the buffer, the 20% buffer, then you can still cover a fair amount of the population that's in need of that type of housing at those price levels. So that's why we threw it out there as a.
Can I add to the credit conversation?
Yeah.
When we first made all this up and then when we, even coming back to it, I think we are still neglecting the people on the very, very lowest end, the 50% AMI and less. Maybe there could be credits, you know, instead of increasing these credits in the mid-range, maybe we increase the credit or give a credit in the very lowest range. Like the builder can get, I don't know, maybe three for one if they build a 50% AMI unit or something like that. Because there are, when I, when I look at this, the Chaffee Housing Authority sheet, we're seeing the, our servers in Salida made an average of 54% AMI. And, and we have a lot of people like that. We have teachers in that range. We, we have a lot of people in Salida in that range that are still not getting anything.
So Bill, does that, just clarify for me, does that, they have to 1.5 or two credits? Does that apply only to for sale or is it for sale in rent?
This case is for sale, what we're talking about.
But it would be also for rent? Is, is that, I can't remember.
Yeah, we talked about if it was 60% AMI or lower that you'd get the extra credit.
Even for a rental?
For rental.
Okay.
Yeah, for sale.
And, and I'm curious, where, where is that 54% number for the workforce? Because I recall, you know, having many conversations with members of the workforce, servers, et cetera, that weren't even able to qualify at the 80% for the Housing Trust projects because they were above it because they were working a couple jobs and with tips. So where did that number come from?
I don't know.
Is that on Ashley's thing?
It's on the Chaffee Housing Authority's.
Yeah. Just don't know where you're working, where you're only making like $18,000 a year. Like, I'm, I'm trying to figure out like, just being in the service industry, like where are you working where you're making so little?
You're not.
In this area.
Maybe you're working one day a week.
I mean, unless you're working a couple hours, yeah.
Yeah. Also to the point, I mean, there are difficulties above and beyond what we're discussing with for sale housing at the low ends. I mean, number one, of course, it still costs the same to build. More or less, the, the construction costs are the same. Those who are at those levels of AMI tend to have fewer resources for anything from a down payment to maintenance on the home. So there's challenges there, especially in the long term. And, you know, Chaffee Housing Trust and REITs here, of course, they do tend to focus on for sale housing at those lower levels. You go as low as 60% or so, or 70-ish?
Some folks make it at high 50s, but it's rare.
Okay. He's able to do that because he's bringing in some significant subsidies from the state in the form of grants and everything else. So that starts getting into a whole nother realm of affordability that is much more challenging to, for the city to be able to address than say the Housing Trust or a Lytec project or whatever else it might be. So that's the, one of the reasons we haven't really focused on it.
So I know we spent a lot of time already on, so are we going to talk about fee and lieu as well?
Yep.
Okay.
I've got that on the, the next page, I believe.
Okay.
There's four more slides left.
I mean, this is just a small topic, right? Easy, easy stuff.
Yes, yes. The most important thing, I think.
Okay. So again, if we're going to make any sort of shifts, especially downwards as far as the sales prices or rental prices, we need to take into account the, the balance of practicality as far as developers still being willing to move forward and, and build these developments, you know? And again, if they're not going to make money on it, they're not likely to, to do that. So we're considering some other possible areas where if there are some shifts, there might be some gives. One could potentially be on building permit review fees. We still charge those on, on all inclusionary housing units. That might be one thing that we could do on the, the units themselves or even potentially, you know, across the entire development at a percentage or something. you know, across the entire development at a percentage or something along those lines. Open space fees is another one. We don't provide any sort of reductions for affordable housing for the open space fees, which are currently $5,000 per unit. And part of the reason that historically has been that those individuals are still utilizing the open space, whether you're talking about the acquisition of it or the improvements thereof. At this point, staff would not recommend any additional dimensional standards incentives. We already give a bunch of them on the density side of things, and a few other shifts within those standards. We're in the middle of the land use code update. We're intending on retaining some of those incentives into the new code, but we already have some proposed increases in density across the board. There have been a number of questions, to your point, Mayor, about smaller projects, those that don't, don't require a built unit, anything under six units or lots. Currently, those projects pay a fee-in lieu of actually providing a unit of $17.40 per square foot that goes into the Affordable Housing Fund. That direction came from planning commission and eventually approved by council to, to treat each house equally. So, it didn't matter if you were building two new units at market rate or 52 at market rate, that there was proportionality there as far as the difference in market rate from the, from what an affordable unit would cost. What I'd like to find out from these two bodies is, is there a desire to change that? There have been some folks that have found that to be very challenging, if they're, you know, a small-time developer, just doing a few, few units, a minor subdivision, or whatever it may be, where, you know, a 2,000-square-foot house, for instance, would translate to over $35,000 in, in fees-in lieu for affordable housing. And then the last thing to mention is that the, the fee-in lieu, right now, we have kind of a complicated formula. So, if you have a 44, let's see, I'm sorry, got to do my math, a 40-unit development, you're required to build six inclusionary housing units. That leaves you four left over, four, four market rate, that you pay like a percentage on of the fees-in lieu, and it's, it's just administratively challenging. So, we're wondering if it makes sense to kind of just round up or round down on those. So, at that, I'm going to like, kind of leave it to discussion.
I'm just curious, going back to, because I don't recall, but when the direction was given, the rationale for not factoring in if it was a real small scale versus larger scale, can you help me to remember what that was?
Yeah, and I see a gift hand going up because I know...
Storytime.
What's that?
That's storytime.
You, you know what, Francie, go, you might be able to say it better than I did, or...
Well, I don't know if I can say any better, but I do remember being really conflicted with the smaller properties, thinking that it would simply encourage larger developers to split the lots down to smaller portions and therefore not have to contribute. That was our concern. I totally understand that there's the other, other side to it, and that is a small individual developer that is just trying to do the right thing. So, but that is what we weighed, because we'd seen it before. We'd seen it before when we have, not to mention any names, but that there are 19 units that, that do not have the same requirements as larger developments. And we have seen people come before us in the past saying that, that it's just for their ease to split the lot down or whatever, and then all of a sudden, there were 19 units and it missed a bunch of the other requirements. So, you know, that's a real concern for us, so I don't really know what the answer is, but I think that rather than waiving it for under, under six lots, I, I think that if there's an, I think we should be giving some fair compensation, or, I don't, I don't want to use the word variance, because that's become a dirty word, but I think we should have some kind of, some way to say, if it's an individual building under this, you know, maybe, or maybe even, I don't know, I, I'm not sure what the answer is. We didn't know then, and I don't know now, but I do know that we need to, to continue to think about this so that we can both be fair to the small developer as well as not create loopholes that cost us housing and, and, you know, the, the fund.
Yeah, the, the other thing to add to that is, I think we decided to make it the same per-square-foot cost, whether you're doing one or five units, because the, the developers tend to take a loss when they were actually required, when they build a deed-restricted unit. In almost all cases, it's either breaking even, or it's a bit of a loss based off of the construction cost. And to your point, we don't want to create the one-under philosophy, the one-under rule, where if six is the, is the threshold, then people are going to be building a bunch of five to try to get the discounts, or whatever it may be. And it could be the same thing, instead of five, you go to four and get a smaller rate. One thing to throw out there as a possible solution to this, it's something we've kind of considered in South Ark, it's been thrown around in a couple other developments, including West End subdivision, is to allow for this group, the one-to-five units only, to provide a local workforce market unit as an option, so that it's not income-restricted, but it would be restricted to members of the local workforce and could be sold at whatever the price would bear for that, and revolving, right? So, if it's old again, it would have to go to another member of the local workforce, but at whatever price. So, that's not, another suggestion to kind of throw in there to kind of help with the smaller projects.
Is that done anywhere else? How do you keep proving that, like, you get a Thanksgiving, a series of locally, like, it's not just saying it can't be a second home or investment?
Right, and the Housing Authority, their guidelines provide all the rules for the local employment. And they're, they're doing that, actually, in a number of communities, Vail is, Vail and Avon right now, they've pretty much gone away with income requirements. It's just local housing. So, it's kind of creating this market and this competitive scenario where if you're one of the first ones in the door, then you can probably charge a little bit more, but if you're one of the last ones, you're probably charging less, you know, that's the maximum you can charge, so...
There have been some unintended consequences with this.
Well, there always are.
I know.
There, there are, and, and that's why I'm bringing it to you all to see if there's a desire to try to, to work on that.
And I, I want to throw out to everyone, we do have someone in the audience tonight who is one of those unintended consequences, and it, and it might be helpful just to take a few minutes, maybe five minutes, can it be five?
Yeah.
Okay, and just hear, because, I mean, you know, it's so hard when we're doing policy up here, this might be helpful just to take it down to the level of how it's affecting people. So, Robin, if you want to come up?
Thank you, you guys, thank you so much. I will try to keep this short, I know this is a business meeting, and I'm just here for information. I have an agreement with the City of Salida for the Greenheart subdivision. We have a small development, we have four parcels, two of which are being developed currently right now, my home, and then a local family is also building there. Our agreement with the city is we could build 120% AMI unit on one of the parcels, and this is because we are, we're just figuring this out this week, we fall under two umbrellas. We had to do a plan development to get access to our back lots. We also are a minor subdivision. So, there's issues from both perspectives. One, what we did is we turned a junkyard in downtown Salida into four lots, which I think is great, I think that's a benefit to the City of Salida, but we're being penalized for it because we needed to access the back two lots, and we are under six units. Here's our situation. We are asking X amount for our lot right now, and it is less than what we owe. It's less than our loan. In order to create these four lots, it cost $350,000 thus far, and we're not done paying for it yet, we still have to put in the road. In retrospect, we probably should have split it in two. We didn't want to be landhogs, we split it into four, but now everybody that builds there is being penalized. So, we could do 120% AMI and waive the fee-in lieu of, but actually, we can't, because I do work at the bank, and I've asked everybody about loans, I've talked to Reed, I've talked to Dan, I've talked to Bill about what can we do, how can we get creative? The bank's not going to loan me money, because the cost of building for 120% or under AMI unit right now, plus the cost of the land exceeds what the bank will give us. So, the numbers don't work, and that's my point, is the formula that you have isn't working for small developers. It's even weird to say that I'm a developer. We're just people that wanted to split it in four because we didn't need all that property, and why not do it downtown? It avoids sprawling. And our goal to you guys was to try to sell it to somebody local. We've had some developers look at it, they don't want to pay the affordable, the fee-in lieu of. I've turned away three of my old students, a doctor, two educators, a couple that is going under contract today and something else outside of town, and they grew up here, two blocks away, because nobody wants to pay that fee-in lieu of. The gentleman that we sold our, one of the lots to, he is working class, building really quickly, very simply, to avoid more fee-in lieu of fees. $24,000, he's got two little ones, they're total working class, and that $24,000 he's going to have to pay is a, it's a burden. It's a burden on him, it hurts him. And that, and that's what it comes down to, and so we're having trouble selling this other lot, it's been on the market over 400 days, nobody's going to pay that fee-in lieu of. So, we're all hurting, because of course, I'm paying 28% taxes on that vacant lot, and we owe more than we're asking. And that's the other thing, you can't start building on it till you pay X percent of that. Well, we have to sell it to be able to pay our mortgage off, to be able to, and we're not getting, we're not the people that are getting a free piece of land. Our partners, none of us are getting a free piece of property, we're essentially market-rate to be able to live where we're living.
I have, I have a question for Bill on this exactly thing. Would it be possible, possible, I know there's going to be an emergency or something, but is it possible to modify the PD? Because if this had come, if this had been on our radar when Robin had her plan development before us, we could have negotiated those things. So, and I know plan developments get modified, can this plan development be modified to relieve her burden? And, and I would say, in other situations where there's five, five units or less than six that come before us as a subdivision, could we then negotiate with those individuals that are going to be cost-burdened because of this, without affecting the large developments? That's my question.
So, as of today, yes?
Yes, today. Could we do it quick?
As of tomorrow, if, should the...
Maybe it would be continued to allow people to do that, I don't know, it's...
The wording of the proposed moratorium discusses no substantial modifications to plan developments, and basically, anytime you include something having to do with inclusionary housing, it is considered substantial. I suppose there could be some language that's specific to, you know, unless it had to do specifically with inclusionary housing, or...
This is more having to do with subdividing and the lots, the, the small, the small developments.
Well, and access to the back lots, you guys gave us access.
Sure, and, and it doesn't really, sure, it doesn't really matter, you know, why. What matters is it wasn't done when, because we, it wasn't on our radar when the PD was established, and had it been on our radar, we could have negotiated something at that time. My question is, can we somehow modify, find a way to modify the PD in a way that's fair to this developer and possibly set some boundaries, some standards for future developers that are in the same situation without changing all of the, the other things that create loopholes? That's my question.
Can I actually tag on to that for a second? I, I think in your situation, the, the extra access enabled more lots, right? So, that's a benefit, but then this fee-in lieu came in, kind of separate, but also connected to the access, right?
That, yeah.
And that's the thing...
Right, I get what you're saying, but I, I guess to pick up where you were going, like, I don't think this commission wants to be negotiating every single...
No, it doesn't.
...ever, but that's also the point of the PD to...
The point of the PD is negotiating.
Right.
And if, if we, if something...
But we don't want to waive our fee-in lieu in every case, like, we don't want to be in that position.
And we don't, every PD is unique, and we, and stands on its own merit.
What, what is the fee-in lieu that you're, that's holding you up on that back lot?
What's what?
How much is the fee-in lieu?
$17,400. $17,400, unless I, well, for example, the lot that's vacant right now, that's for sale, it could go up to 20 again, depending on when we sell it. So, we don't know what the, we're always like, should I, I'm always calling Bill, should I pay now? Should I pay now? What do we do? Because I don't like to owe people money. I respect that the process happened, I didn't know that negotiating was an option, and we also didn't know that the formula wouldn't work. We didn't know interest rates were going to go to 9.75. We didn't know 120% AMI, what that would look like, but it's not affordable housing. I mean, when I'm turning down my kids, my teachers, my, I mean, my old students, when I'm turning down two teachers, they want it.
So, you're talking about you having to increase by about 30 grand?
It's not even, we just owe more because we did the subdivision, because we did it into four. We didn't expect it to be $350,000, and so it costs a lot, and so that's where we, we have to pay off a mortgage, and it'll, of course, you know, we're willing to take some out of our pocket, because that's what we have to do, it's our responsibility, but it's not helping to get somebody local into that lot, is my issue.
It's a good, yeah, it's a good message for just all of us here to understand as we're making policy.
Thank you. I plan on coming to tomorrow night's meeting and speaking publicly, because I just wanted you to have this information for your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all you have to do is make sure that the loophole is closed for bad people, and then opened up for good people.
Yeah, it's not so much for bad people, it's, it's the idea that, that there are...
I didn't mention any names.
No, I know.
If anybody has a guilty conscience, it's on them.
It's just that there are certain circumstances that require exceptions, that's all I'm saying, and, and that's the point of the PD, is we look at it individually, each one separately, and, and so I think that's perfectly legitimate to say, you know, that we can modify a PD in some way to, to ease the burden for, you know, one particular plan development where we might not do it for another plan development, and that's our legal guidance. If one doesn't create, you know...
No precedent.
No precedent.
Right, ma'am. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, to Catherine's point, we have a lot of inclusionary housing units that are approved through much smaller processes, duplex conversions, administrative review type stuff, where that could come up as well. The point in the moratorium, which we'll hear about tomorrow night, is really just about reducing some of the workload, frankly, so that the focus can happen on the land use code and update itself, and every time there's a substantial modification that comes forth, there's a, it's a ton of work. So, that's, that's why it's been part of that, y'all can discuss that tomorrow night.
Yep.
One other thought that came to me while we were talking about this is the way that we have developed the fee-in lieu was more or less created through a formula that dates back to 2018, with a few updates that we've done, and if, if we're going to adjust any of the for-sale parameters, target ranges, down, there, there could be room there to update how, what we're exactly calling affordable, right? And so, right now, I actually think the affordable amount, the, the base that it's, that this number is based off of, is actually lower than what the average is required through inclusionary housing. And so, there may be an opportunity there to look at it when we come to you with a fee-in lieu change, to look at a slightly different formula that would account for, instead of looking at how, what the market's just doing, we could look at... of looking at how, what the market's just doing, we could look at what that affordability is based off of. And that might, if you're all interested, it would shrink the fee in lieu for everybody. That's, that's the ultimate impact of doing that, is it wouldn't just apply to one particular project, it would just reduce it for everybody. I mean, you see what the numbers are right now. You can do the math yourself according to whatever size unit you're thinking of in your head. It's not an insignificant number. I mean, it's, you know, often between 5 and 10% of the cost of the home. So, anyways...
And Bill, is 17,40 a square foot of the building you're going to build, or of the property?
Of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, again, so if it's a 2,000 square foot house, it's going to be over $35,000.
Not including the, it doesn't include the AD or garage.
Right.
Right, of the primary, primary house.
Yeah, it is the primary home. No garage or...
So, we could also look at that. All right. I got some direction on some stuff, a few things still kind of left out there.
On the fractional, I think that we should round them down, because it is insanely complicated on the fractional portions. I'd like to see some change on that.
Same, yeah.
That would, that would certainly things up a bit.
Round it, everybody, like, is in support of rounding it down? Or like, if you have, say, 5.75 units required, they have to provide five, or they have to provide six?
I'd go with the 0.5. Round up the standard rounding. Just like below 0.5, round it down.
Standard accounting rounding.
Yes.
So, the only people then who would be dealing with fee in lieu would be six and below.
That would pretty much get rid of your fractional fee in lieu.
I mean, which, you know, I don't think a fraction for a 50-unit development is the kind of burden that you just heard.
Right.
The burden is for the real small...
The, the challenge is going to be, if you have an eight-unit development and you don't have a fee in lieu, then you just would owe one, one unit, and you get no fee in lieu for the additional.
Can you send us the formula?
Send us all the, a list of all the loopholes that could be exploited. Other people will see them, and they will. All right, yeah, don't do that.
You ever take, you know, calculus? It's pretty much like one of the pages out of one of those books, right?
So, Bill, I have a suggestion on that, too. So, what if it's an eight-unit, just to use that example, and you have one unit built, and you have no fee in lieu, but you have to de-restrict for the community one additional unit, instead of paying the fee in lieu, at market rate?
Oh, for the, not, non-income, you're saying?
So, you'd have two de-restricted units, you'd have one with, that it would be income-qualified, and the other that would not be, and that would be a solution to have more community buildings, but get rid of the fee in lieu.
So, like, would you write a first refusal on the, on that one?
Yeah, I mean, you could do either way. I mean, I guess you could pay the fee, or you could de-restrict another property.
Yeah, we'll have to play with that one a little bit. There might be some situations where they, yeah, aren't, aren't building it. For instance, if it's just a subdivision, and they're not building the units, then it gets tricky, right?
Right. Well, I mean, I'm assuming that they're building the units, that's, yeah, but we don't know that.
But we apply inclusionary housing to where they're not building it, too.
That's right. Well, and that was when River Ridge was like that, wasn't it? That they paid everything upfront, and then they, they put it into the lock cost.
Kind of.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
All right, well, we may have to, some of this I feel clear about, some of this we might need to bring back for some...
Reflective listening back to us, what we all...
I'll avoid that for today, because I know we have another, another issue. So, thank you all, this is really complicated stuff. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks. And thanks, P and Z.
Thank you.
All right, good to see you, planners. Thanks for coming.
Y'all come back now, you hear?
Y'all come back now, you hear?
Dogs in parks.
Oh, God. Oh, man. When you put it that way, God.
Diesel's turn.
I'm going to get water.
Something like that?
Yeah. And we'll have to decide whether it's going to be deer or dog.
Or homeless.
Or homeless.
It's really hard to tell after a couple of days.
You guys don't have a paper dear, do you?
Oh, heck, yeah, man.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need help getting out?
No, somebody will help me.
We, we have another session. Oh, yeah, we have another topic.
She's going to help me.
Actually, I'm going to go with her. Because that was way too much.
That was way more than I was...
Really expecting some reflective listening. I don't want to... Come on, Mel, let us down.
We ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
Right. All right, so, background is up on your memo. Pretty straightforward. We started working on our policies and procedures, and all of that, much of that boils down to what's in our code. And when we kept going back to our code, we kept finding lots of inaccuracies, lots of outdated stuff, lots of odd language, just even concepts. So, clearly, it was code that was thrown in there randomly. Most of it still called for the director of Public Works to be managing the parks.
David, your boss?
Yeah. So, so, we took almost over a year, I think, at this point, to finally settle into some code that we, we like. So, if you want to get into the presentation, any questions about the background? Cool, go ahead and scroll. The existing code, it's Chapter 11, Street Sidewalks in Public Areas, Article 6, Parks and Recreation Areas, and, yeah, out of date, ready to move on. I think the next slide has the, the, these are the titles of the, of the existing code. So, each article kind of has some strange, like, there's one for just Marvin Park, one for the skate park, and they just, again, it was very awkward. Go ahead and flip. Some of the prohibited, the extent of the prohibited act section, we've got some odd things. The Public Works, the second bullet, Public Works Director shall post all city parks with clear legible signs reading "No Dogs Allowed," which signs will be posted in such a manner as to give all persons entering the park notice that dogs are not permitted therein. We've got our glass containers, and these are, and this is written in city code, as opposed to being like more of a guidance doc, or a...
Park rules.
Well, right, allowing for us to post park rules, right? Like, we just have this blank, these blanket rules across the entire city that make it a little bit difficult to, to, like, have a dog park. So, when you can't have dogs in any parks in the city. So, go ahead and scroll. Some of the illogical stuff, we all like the, or not like, sorry, we find the first one quite amusing. Some really interesting language as to how the city administrator can discipline children at the pool who are unattended as if they were her own children.
For the record. Just for the record. My child is lovely at the aquatic center. She's...
You're going, I'm getting you a wooden...
She's never had to be disciplined in a public place.
Yeah, it's corporal punishment, if that's how you exercise.
Well, it's in our code. So, we felt it was time for some updates. Again, just some more examples of, like, this very specific Marvin Park code about people being there for a sporting event who don't have to apply for a special event license. So...
Because they're just watching again.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead and scroll. So, the proposed new code sections read like this. A lot of this came from other municipalities, as it typically does. Erica and her team did a bunch of research. They came back with probably four municipalities that were similar in, in kind of size and nature and, and culture to us, and we copied and pasted and cut and moved things around to try to fit our needs as best as possible. Other sections of our city code that is affected by this update would be the Animal Nuisance Code. So, we can get into that if you scroll. So, some of the major deviations from our existing code to the update, again, nothing specific, nothing for specific parks like Marvin Park or the skate park. We did add special uses and parades and races as an activity that warranted a permit. They were not in that, in the past, and so, it would be hard when someone wanted to film on S Mountain. Like, we didn't really have anything in our code to dictate what we were supposed to do in that situation, or did they need insurance? So, the council approves the liquor license, not an event unless requested by staff to do so, and that wasn't written in previous code, but it wasn't clearly defined in the previous code. We, one of the things I like about the rewrite is that it refers consequences to violation of the code, back to our enforcement, Chapter 1 of, these are the rules, and if you don't follow the rules, these are the consequences. Where now, once we post rules in the parks, they're enforceable based on this code, so as times change and things evolve, and vaping becomes a thing, you can change the sign and the rules apply. And the big one in this case, dogs would be allowed in parks on a 10-foot leash held by a human being.
No robots.
Still, no robots. Not tied to a tree, not tied to a bench, and, and so, you know, they'll still be barred from special events. But this came, this has been back and forth for a while in the city of Salida.
Why a 10-foot leash? I'm just curious. I've always seen like as a six-foot. I mean, I know it's more controlled.
Well, we, we do have a, a contingent of...
10 feet of that dog, I guess.
What's that?
You'll know that not to eat within 10 feet of that dog.
With that person, right?
The person.
We know that there are trainers, we have a contingency of trainers in town that use much longer leashes. There are some, there are some, some community members that use Marvin Park for, it's like...
It makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. There is, there is a logic behind it. So, as far as we know, based on history, and some of you may know this better than us, but the no dogs in parks came when a city council member's child was bit, and it was kind of a knee-jerk, like, we're done, no more dogs in parks. It has worked, I mean, we have it posted in most of our parks, that there are no dogs. It is really difficult to enforce that there are no dogs in parks. It will be equally difficult to enforce dogs on leashes in parks. It's a little more obvious, it's a little more socially unacceptable to have your dog running around like an animal in a park, but people still do it.
And I still think it's a horrible idea to have dogs in parks, because it's not just because the dog's biting you, it's because of your little children stepping in, dog leavings, and it is a crisis at that point. You know, I think it's a horrible idea. I've watched people with their dogs, and their behavior is beyond rude.
Yeah.
So, so, I, I hear you, and every time I go to an event in the park, people have dogs, and it creates conflict, because we have people that are rule followers, and we have others who aren't. And if we have a rule, I mean, right now, there's a rule that says no dogs. It's not enforced, and it's creating all kinds of conflict.
It really does.
So, if we put something in place, because they're already there to begin with, I, I'm just, will that reduce or eliminate some of that conflict? I don't know, but...
I think the rule followers will have less anxiety, but there is, there's, there are cost implications, too. We'll have to have more muppets. Enforcement direction would have to come from you, and where your priorities, where you wanted to lay priorities. We know, we've seen the reports from law enforcement, they're, they're strapped, so this would not fall high on their priority for enforcement.
And you can't enforce it, so just don't allow them.
So, is this, like, is this Riverside Park, too?
Yeah.
And Alpine Park?
Right, so would it be possible if it's like, some parks, yes, dogs, some parks, no dogs? Is that an option?
It is an option. Again, pretty, I mean, most of the conflict that we experience as staff is when our non-enforcement staff tries to enforce something, and points out to someone, you're not supposed to have a dog in parks, or your dog here.
Well, they got one.
Right, and it turns into a lot of, that's where our staff honestly gets in trouble. When they've had enough, they see some dog pooping, they know they're going to have to go clean it up, and they finally say something, and then, you know, the community member gets all mad and yells back, and back and forth, and...
By the way, he never reached out to me.
No.
That thing last summer.
I feel like it's going to get worse with the dogs pooping in the parks and not cleaning, people not cleaning it up. And I, I think dogs are great. I have nothing against dogs or people that have dogs. They're great. But I, you know, we go to the Thursday night music, or the, you know, the music in the park, we go to the farmer's market, and I know during an event, there won't be dogs. But the day before the event, there were dogs, and there are people out there with no shoes on, adults, kids, the whole thing, at every one of those, the day before, the day of, and the day after.
And I would argue, I mean, music in the park on Thursdays, there are a lot of dogs in the park.
Yeah.
Like, they're, they're...
And I think it'll get worse if you just open it up to allow dogs, but...
Well, technically, the music in the park would be a special event, and dogs would still be barred, but they, but they don't, and...
But if it says dogs allowed in the park...
I don't, I don't see the logic of it'll be worse if it's more directed towards, like, just have a leash, because I don't know, if you've ever done a farmer's market booth, there's dogs without a leash, just like running around, and Jane Templeton loses her mind each time.
And that's usually when the pooping and the lack of cleanup occurs. If you have a dog on a leash, you know exactly what it's doing, and there's people around you, and there's the shame factor. I mean, have you ever noticed how, like, people will be out at night, walking the dog, and they look this way and that way, just to see if anyone's around, if they see someone, they pick it up, and if not, they leave it?
They look like they don't know what their dog is doing.
So, I, I have to admit, we brought this to you because it is...
Contagious.
And, and they're too, I mean, they really are, I haven't been able to get a single, any group of people in one room to agree.
Sort of like F Street all over again.
Yeah.
This came, this went to the pros, and after three meetings, they finally said, we, we can't decide, we can't agree, and we need to just push it up to council. So, you, it is, it, and maybe you do need more time to, to, you know, take the temperature of the community, and, and feel free to, to advise us as to that, but...
All I'll say is that, like, there's certain hot-button topics we hear about all the time. We hear about deer, we hear about other things.
Another contributor of feces in our park.
Feces, right. But, but how many, how many people, like, here, show of hands, in the last six months have gotten more than three phone calls about dogs in parks?
No, just direct comments.
But how many, a lot of, I mean...
Deer a lot more.
But with the policy as it is, with the policy as it is where dogs aren't allowed in parks, how many people here have gotten lots of complaints about it? Anybody? Only at the farmer's market.
No, just like in the summer, when I'm at an event or wherever it is, and then other people are going, well, you're not supposed to have your dog here.
Okay.
You know, that's where, when I'm out there at the event, or even walking through the park, and there's somebody's dog running, and then other people are going, hey, you get your dog on a leash. So, you hear it when you're around town.
Right.
Get your dog on a leash.
Not so much direct, but just in going back to that, so if you have your dog on a leash, and you've picked it up, you picked up deer droppings, the next day, your kids are out there at the park dancing with bare feet.
Uh-huh. Right next to the deer, right next to a huge deer dropping, all over the park.
Right.
But they're vegetarians.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, sometimes, unless they get into some Doritos or something.
There is, there is research that maybe essentially does confirm that wild animal poop is different than domesticated animal poop.
I don't want to get that close.
I, I, hey, I've been down a lot, I've been down a lot of rabbit holes on this issue, so...
Sniff test committee.
Oh, I don't really want to get into the weeds on that one.
Is there a survey that we can look at about this?
So, the, again, this came out, this came from the 2019 Post Master Plan Recommendations, and one of the recommendations was to allow dogs in Salida parks. Um, and that, that master plan process went through a lot of community and, um, engagement. Um, uh, I don't, I, I personally, it was my first year, first six months on the job, I personally don't remember a specific survey about dogs in parks.
Well, it certainly opens the door to all the problems that we've described. Uh, you know, "Oh, the leash just got away from me. Oh, they're over there doing it with their dog. Oh, I didn't know my dog pooped, I thought it was special." You know, and if you just don't allow them, you don't have all that conflict.
The door is already open.
It needs to be closed. The door was open on S Street, too.
It hasn't worked. This, this whole, like, no dogs in parks has not, in my experience, just, just from doing the city booth in Alpine Park, you, nobody can say with a straight face, like, "Oh, this whole dog ban has worked."
Yeah.
Like, it just hasn't.
It hasn't worked. Regardless of what decision we make, it's still gonna be out there, and we're not gonna...
Wherever we change it to, people are gonna have problems, you know, with that, with that, what we change it to. If we just leave it where it is, we're not seeing a huge uprising of, of anybody really having trouble with dogs in parks right now.
We'll know if 50 people come to the council meeting tomorrow night and sign up for public...
Well, Diesel, you...
With their dogs?
You noted that we could take some more time on this before voting tomorrow?
I mean, it can, the agenda can be amended, and it can be pulled.
Tomorrow, you could decide to do that. Remembering that there's two, there are two votes on this because it's an ordinance, so tomorrow would be, um, potentially more in-depth, um, presentation from Diesel as the first reading, then the second reading is setting the public hearing, which is, would be on the 16th.
Which is usually when we get all our feedback.
Yeah, so, but you can still remove it from the agenda tomorrow when you're...
Well...
When the meeting comes to order, it's up to you, just wanted to remind you there's a second.
Does it remove everything, or just the no dogs in parks?
Just the poop.
Just the poop part.
Right.
I mean, but I don't want to slow down the whole thing, but if we're feeling like we just need time for dogs in parks issue, but the rest of it is good, how does that work?
You could just propose an amendment to no dogs in the park, right?
Correct.
And, and come back to it at a later, later date, much later date.
But it doesn't slow you down for the rest of this?
Yeah, I...
Or it does?
Back, back to the theme of our retreat. Um, we've been operating like this for a long time. I'm not, two weeks isn't kind of, it's not a big deal. We can, we can...
I really want to contemplate if, like, a selective bred pug counts as a dog, or is it more like a science experiment?
You know, I do wonder, like, where does it, and then where does this end? Do we get into bully breeds, and do we get into, like, specific dog bans?
Science experiment.
It, it is, it is a slippery slope.
Yeah.
You won't see my dogs in the park, no dogs in parks.
But to your question, if, if, if the council can't agree on the dogs in a park, there could be an amendment to pass the, um, ordinance with that provision taken out. Um, and then you could get a majority of the council to vote on that.
Separately.
Correct, so it, the, procedurally, you'd have the motion to approve the ordinance with this amendment, um, if you, if you wanted to, if there was agreement on taking that provision out, but moving forward with everything else.
And, I mean, this is, I, I thought that it was appropriate to come to a work session because there is back and forth. Um, and so, if you wanted to do that, I can definitely come tomorrow with language for an amendment that continues business as usual, essentially, and then you give me direction to research more and come back. Or you say, "We need four weeks, Diesel, put this back," or, or, "Four months, bring this back to us in, like, four months, and we'll have listened and gotten our pulse of the community."
Is, is, so right now, there's signs that say, "No dogs allowed in the park"?
Some say no dogs, some say no pets.
Okay, yep, I've seen them.
Yeah.
So would, if, if this were in here, would it cost more money? You just remove all those signs? You don't put in the signs that say, "Dogs are allowed now"? It's not gonna cost you more money?
Right, we would, we would end up probably having to invest in mutt stations. Then, to your point, we would probably, we probably would have more operational costs. It will take longer to prep parks and do daily service. There will probably be more dog poop in, in most of our parks. It, it's, I mean, likely it will be.
So it would cost the city a little bit more money on, is what...
Yes, we do think it'll cost more money. And then, if you, if you want to take enforcement seriously, you probably need another community, uh, engagement, community...
Resource.
Yeah, service officer?
Code enforcement, code enforcement.
Resource officer?
The only time I've ever been arrested in my life was because of a dog-related incident, a dog at large.
The, the, the city, the city, the city code said all, says all dogs need to be on a leash when in all public areas, sidewalks, everywhere except your yard, I think is, is the, is the rule. Um, so that, that dog walking down the sidewalk with the owner, who's right next to their heel, but off a leash, like, that's, that's against our city code. Um, now, really, honestly, it is, we don't enforce that right now. Um, it would, it would be a huge shift, and, and it'd take direction from you and resources to support it, if, if anybody wanted to go there. I mean, I see that, like, poking the bear, if, if we're doing okay, and you guys, nobody's barking up, nobody's barking up your tree about it, um, like, then why? Then why, why pick the scab? So, um, I, I mean, I get it, but it was in the recommendation.
Plenty of scabs in my six-plus years up here, I just feel like this heal naturally.
True, I guess we could just let it be as it is.
No.
And not do anything about the dogs?
Do, like, certain dog training, if you can get licensed to have your dog?
I mean, yeah, there are plenty of them about it, you gotta register your dog, and, I mean, a-again, it's...
Yeah, we don't want all that.
Yeah.
If your dog is enclosed in a bubble.
Nice.
A back bed under your bed.
We'll say outside of the dog thing, though, everything else looks...
Great.
Obvious.
Thank you. Yeah, the dog thing, yeah. Last bullet point, oh, and by the way.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I, for my direction, not that it makes you direct anything, but I, I would prefer to not have this in there. I mean, I know Justin's saying, "Okay, put it, what's the big deal about a dog in the park", but I just, for all the reasons we had said before, I, everything else I don't want to slow you down on because you're having great direction, a lot of these things, you are right, need to be changed, need to be updated. I just don't feel like that needs to be put in there.
Yeah.
I don't know what you guys think.
Instead of directly quote me, yeah, yeah. Let's not pick the scab.
Council member Nakarado is online, and her mic isn't working. She said she would like to have more time for the dogs in parks.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I can come, and we can come with language to propose moving forward with this, with an amendment to, um, the, uh, section on, about dogs.
And I'll confer with Zoe when I get home tonight and see what her thoughts are.
Everyone do the same. Contact your local...
And I wouldn't mind if there was something about, in, in the general public, you know, the law is, dogs are to be kept on a 10-foot leash. I wouldn't mind if that was in there, I just don't want to, oh, carte blanche, you can bring your dogs. Because the leash law will be ignored like it is being ignored now.
Sure.
True.
So I understand you wanting to get that out there?
We've tried, I mean, the, the Dog Club does something once a year, and it just, you know, need community members to hold each other accountable, and unfortunately, that gets contentious.
Exactly.
Um, I think that was the last slide, right?
Um, no.
Oh, well, so, there are other things.
There's another thing.
So, we did the prohibited acts, I mean, just, I should have ended with the last slide, sorry. Um, but to, for, for your information, you don't need to read it, it is in your packet, you will read it twice. Um, but the prohibited acts has added things like hitting golf balls, target practice, some things that have come up recently that...
Crossbow.
Cross, yep, things that, you know, and we were, we were actually had quite a discussion about it. We want to encourage Nerf gun wars, but we don't want people shooting crossbows. Um, so, yeah...
Open carry crossbows.
It's kind of funny, the, right. Um, the, uh, another thing that I will add, now that I'm thinking of it, maybe if you scroll one more, um, "To affix anything, to climb, affix any item or remove any item from a tree within a park, um, except for slacklines and hammocks affixed to trees are minimum 14 inches in diameter and must not cause damage, blah, blah, blah." There was definitely pushback on that. Um, as a Tree City USA, best practice is really nothing on trees, period. Um, so slacklines, we know. It is a vector pole, which applies whatever the, back to calculus, more like physics here, whatever the vector pole force of a 200-pound person on a slackline is on a tree, it's not good. Um, but, um, it kind of depends on what you want your parks to be for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, uh, you can consider that and give us some direction tomorrow to, or, uh, yeah, tomorrow to amend that section as well, if you prefer the, the tree board. Um, I believe the tree board is in a "nothing on trees ever" stance, um, which is appropriate for them, and, um... So, uh, yeah, sorry, the expanded prohibited acts section.
Um, so looking at the, the one about, like, the firearm, archery equipment, unlimited bows, longbows, whatever, um, so when fat axes comes and has there been axe throwing, they have permission to be there, and that's fine, kind of thing, or...
Well, that would, they're, they're part of a special event, and they're a vendor for the special event. So all vendors for special events do need to be approved.
Right, right, right.
Um, most of it's food with the, with public health. Um, but I don't know that we ever officially, like, guess, throw axes, but...
Isn't the axe, like, in a flatbed truck that's got sides on it?
Mm-hmm.
They're not just throwing it loose in the park?
Right, 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 I just wanted to...
Well, you start out in the park, and you hopefully get it in the cage, right? You could be a super bad aim, and it just goes straight up, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would like to be, I would like the Parks and Recreation Code to perhaps be a little bit more like the Community Development Code, where it evolves, and as things come up, we change it. From what we've been practicing recently is, the code was written 20 years ago, and nobody's touched it. And I would love to come to you annually with a little update here, and let's tweak this a little bit here, and, and just make it a little bit more of an evolving document, um, to, to go with the times. Hey, the axe throwing is a thing, like, who knows what's gonna happen this summer out there? Um, so, I, I mean, to your point, well, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Martin, I would, I would hope to be able to come back with tweaks and modifications. Um, this is just the first one, and it's a pretty big one, we're kind of starting from scratch, so, um, that's why it's, it's big, is the whole thing.
If you're actively hunting in the park with your dog, you don't have that real leash.
That is a nuisance animal.
It's fine.
And that's a CPW issue, I believe.
We'll be discussing that later.
Yes, we'll talk about deer in the parks in a couple weeks.
10-foot leashes for them as well, are we thinking?
And diapers.
Okay.
I'm changing topics, so I don't want to...
Does the city provide the diapers for the dogs, so they can put on, by the go in the park?
Not for the dog or the...
Doggy diaper stations, yeah. Any, is there another slide?
He's ready.
Um, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah?
I just wanted to let you all know that Derek, I'm so sorry.
Diesel, a final question on this slacklines and, and hammocks and stuff. Couldn't we put up something like the bowlers that you would hang that stuff on? That was anchored, and, and you could do those things without hurting the trees?
That was, that was totally brought up as an option. And if, and if they, if we were to say, "Nothing on trees," um, that's exactly what we would do. We'd find, we'd find areas.
And if you provide that for people to do, then you know...
No, it's, well, it is, it's, it's the level of risk that we want to assume, and I would think that hammocks and slacklines are a level of risk that we'd be okay with.
Especially if the slackline's down here somewhere.
Right, if the post is only this tall.
Yeah.
Um, but...
Okay, sorry. Back to you.
No, if we're, I just, if we're all done with this, I wanted to let you all know of a couple changes to tomorrow night's agenda. Um, we removed the resolution approving the interstate parking contract, and we can just, we'll discuss that in a couple weeks. Um, and also, an update to the, um, attorney's report as well. So, just making sure you all saw the new agenda, so that you knew what to study tonight.
And so, just so everybody knows, on the, um, the parking contract, we're, we want to take some extra time with it, and that's a reason for it. And that came out of the retreat last week to really take our time with things. We don't have to rush things, so...
Good, good.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.